I love music so much. I love music.
For those at home, as well as those in the audience, that was an introduction to what's going to take place Thursday night and we'll continue with that introduction in a moment. But first let me ask Ms. Muns if she'd call a roll.
All right, sir. Gibson?
Present.
McLaughlin?
Present.
Goggins?
Present.
Thomas?
Present.
Carter?
Here.
Desto?
Here.
Witcher?
Present.
And Spinelli?
Present.
Call Ms. Preston, John.
Thank you, Ms. Muns. Can I ask if we stand for the prayer by all of whom best will follow by the pledge by all whom partake?
Father, we're gathered here before you this day, this time, where your love is so important to us. We forgive you, ask that you forgive us of our transgressions and that you would touch everyone's heart in this special time of year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those at home, as well as those in the audience, that was an introduction to what's going to take place Thursday night and we'll continue with that introduction in a moment. But first let me ask Ms. Muns if she'd call a roll.
All right, sir. Gibson?
Present.
McLaughlin?
Present.
Goggins?
Present.
Goggins. Thomas?
Present.
Carter?
Here.
Desto?
Here.
Witcher?
Present.
And Spinelli?
Present.
Call Ms. Preston, John.
Thank you, Ms. Muns. Can I ask if we stand for the prayer by all of whom best will follow by the pledge by all whom partake?
Father, we're gathered here before you this day, this time, where your love is so important to us. We forgive you, ask that you forgive us of our transgressions and that you would touch everyone's heart in this special time of year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin with the agenda, if I could, without objection, ask Ms. Donna Boone from the North Little Rock Junior League. Donna is gonna make a, an announcement I think that we all, I hope, will pay special attention to. It's a great project that the league always does this time of the year. Donna?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here to represent the Junior League as we work with the Salvation Army for the Angel Tree at McCain Mall. The Junior League sponsors this tree and over half of the angels that are adopted are taken from that tree. It's the eighth consecutive year that we have worked on this and it gets to be more important to us every year. There are 175 active members in the Junior League and this is the project that everyone works on. Everyone works at least one shift and we encourage everyone to adopt angels. I brought several with me tonight in case there's anyone here who might want to adopt one, they'll be back here on the table. The pink ones are girls, the blue ones are boys, and at the bottom, they're allowed to request two things and that's what we're encouraging people to purchase. If they need clothing, it also will state that on there, but mostly we want to work to get the toys for the children. These children must qualify to be on the tree and usually a parent, grandparent, or even aunt or uncle will come to the Salvation Army during three weeks starting in October to make application for the child. It isn't known to a lot of people, but their income and expenses are verified to make sure that these are definitely children in need. And it's, the Junior League also helps with the application process and this year as I was taking applications, it especially touched me because I had a girl come who I went to junior high and high school with, who qualified for her children to be on this tree. So it's definitely a need in our community and it is people that we know. So I want to encourage everyone that I can. We have several hundred angels left on our tree at McCain Mall and of course if we give those away, then the Salvation Army will gladly bring us more. And I also want to point out that the city is working with the Salvation Army to fill stockings for children this year. And there are some over here on the table, there are suggestions on a board as you come up the stairs for things that might be needed to, or that you might go purchase to fill the stockings and they are either for a boy or a girl. And again, I appreciate your time and I certainly hope that I can encourage some of you, anyone who else might be listening, to come to McCain Mall and get an angel and buy for it because it will be rewarding and you will receive a blessing in return. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And now, so I won't forget, before we go to the symphony, Alderman Gibson moves and Alderman Spinelli seconds the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion, Ms. Muns?
Gibson?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Goggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Desto?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
And now, by way of introduction, Bill Vickery is the executive director of the Arkansas Symphony. I think you might recall council members that we, along with the advertising and promotion and the North Little Rock School District, are sponsoring the first of what we hope is a series of concerts beginning this Thursday. And Bill, if you wanna go ahead and carry it forward, we'll see if we can accent the introduction with a little music.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. Alderman, it's a pleasure to be here again, speaking with you. Let me first start by saying that this project, which we begin on Thursday night, we also are part of the spirit and of the giving of the holiday season because those who come have been asked not only to pay a small token admission, but to bring some cans of food for the Salvation Army and for the Friendly Chapel Soup Kitchen. Before, before we sort of move on to the next step, I just wanna remind everybody that it is Thursday night at 7:30 at the East Campus High and at 6:30 begins the Children's Fair with Santa Claus and the Sugarplum Fairies and the Parade of Instruments. We have a terrific opportunity here to have an enormous number of families from, from the community come to the, the high school and hear the orchestra for the first time in a really terrific Christmas program. Part of the people who are going to be playing in the orchestra are the Arkansas Symphony Orchestra String Quartet, the Quappa Quartet. And if you could just bear with one moment, I'd like to introduce to you the members of the quartet, which was founded 18 years ago at the symphony, are principal violinist Eric Hayward, second violinist, Won Koo Soon, violist Lynn Chang, and our cellist Elise Nelson. Now, there's some other people who are also going to be playing with the orchestra. Steve Powell from KATV and James Smith, our superintendent of schools here in North Little Rock, Teresa Burl, president of the school board, and Mayor Hayes and Mary Muns are gonna be guest soloists with the symphony. So if you all don't come out to see this, you're in a lot of trouble. That's number one. Number two, we thought it would be appropriate to give you just a sneak preview of what's going to happen on Thursday night at 7:30. So Mary, Mayor Hayes, do you wanna come down here for a second? We've got something special for, for you to do with, with the quartet.
Now, point out that we rehearsed Thursday night's performance, but we have not rehearsed this performance.
Oh, this is a complete improvisation. This is gonna be an extraordinary event this evening.
Steve, take this rare opportunity. It may be your last to have this.
I'm not worried about Mary.
I'm not either. I sent this out to her one day at, at a choir. I know better. She can handle it.
You just wanna get over here by, by, by.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I hope that, I hope that comment didn't go across the air.
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I hope that, I hope that comment didn't go across the air.
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I hope that, I hope that comment didn't go across the air.
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I hope that, I hope that comment didn't go across the air.
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I hope that, I hope that comment didn't go across the air.
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I hope that, I hope that comment didn't go across the air.
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I hope that, I hope that comment didn't go across the air.
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I hope that, I hope that comment didn't go across the air.
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better. And we may not either.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
No, we can't sing. We know better.
I can blow that thing.
Okay.
Now, we can come over there.
Who is the head dingaling in that thing?
I don't think.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
R97212, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution appropriating the sum of $36,700 plus closing costs for purchase of a parcel of real estate near the Public Works complex.
Move for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Question?
Please. The appraisal on this came in at $36,700. And this property was purchased in 1994 for $20,000, and I was just wondering if there was somebody here that could explain the difference.
Mr. Smith?
I don't know the date of the purchase, and I don't know the amount of the purchase, when it was purchased. Mr. Fredericks owns this property. He's about, say he's about 80 along with his wife. They own three parcels of land, two of which they live on, and they've... Ms. Fredericks, I believe, has lived there since the '30s. And the other parcel, they acquired from an old friend. And in talking to the Fredericks, I got the impression they've owned that piece of property a long time. It may be true that he just acquired it a few years ago. I don't know that. This is the appraised value. In fact, I called Mr. Fredericks this afternoon after I was told that that was the date of the purchase. He's not available right now. He's in the hospital.
Next time we have legislation such as this, I would, if at all possible, I'd like a copy of the complete appraisal.
Be more than happy to supply that.
We're not, you know, we're not in any real hurry.
Do we hold this so I could look over there, please?
Sure. Be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We'll hold that then until we can clarify some of the questions that we have concerning this.
All right, sir. That is all of the resolutions, sir.
All right. Let's go to ordinances.
09779, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 5963 relating to cruelty of animals make municipal penalties equal to penalties under state law establishing guidelines for handling of animals subject to cruelty. First reading.
Suspend the rules, place the ordinance on its second reading.
Second.
On the motion to suspend, Ms. Muns?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 5963 relating to cruelty of animals make municipal penalties equal to penalties under state law establishing guidelines for handling of animals subject to cruelty. Second reading.
Suspend the rules and place it on its third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
09780, Mayor Hayes.
Please read it.
Mayor, do we want to try to pass the budget tonight?
No.
Okay, I was fixing to say, because if we did, we'd really need to pass 83 before we pass 80.
Yeah, no, I was going to take it to second reading and then hold it until next council meeting.
An ordinance adopting a budget for the 1998 fiscal year for the City of North Little Rock. First reading.
Suspend rules, place on its second.
Second. On the motion to suspend, Ms. Muns?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
An ordinance adopting a budget for the 1998 fiscal year for the City of North Little Rock. Second reading.
Suspend rules, place on its second.
Second. On the motion to suspend, Ms. Muns?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 5963 relating to cruelty of animals make municipal penalties equal to penalties under state law establishing guidelines for handling of animals subject to cruelty. Second reading.
Suspend the rules and place it on its third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 5963 relating to cruelty of animals make municipal penalties equal to penalties under state law establishing guidelines for handling of animals subject to cruelty. Third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
09783, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 6947 codified as section 90-67 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code providing for regular trash pickup establishing additional sanitation fee of $1. First reading.
Suspend rules, place on its second.
Second. Motion made and seconded, Ms. Muns?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 6947 codified as section 90-67 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code providing for regular trash pickup establishing additional sanitation fee of $1. Second reading.
Suspend rules, place the ordinance on its third reading.
Second. On the motion to suspend, and then we have amendment after this. On the motion to suspend, Ms. Muns?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
An ordinance amending section 27-102H of the North Little Rock Municipal Code. First reading.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a few comments, and then I'd like to pass this, but as I indicated two weeks ago, I'm very much opposed to having a billboard on Riverfront Drive beyond that two years that we leased the land for, but I want to make it clear that billboards do serve a useful purpose to the general public. And I think that in an appropriate location, they can be a very useful tool for visitors to our city. So, I'm not opposed to a billboard per se, just in that particular location. And the reason I voted for that in the first place was hopefully to get the one out of Riverfront Park, but I wanted to send a message loud and clear that in two years, I would not like to hear the fact that Don Ray has not had an opportunity to recoup his investment. So, if he would like to put the billboard up for two years, that's fine, but at the end of two years, it's my intention to make sure it's gone. With that, I'd like to move, suspend the rules, place the ordinance on its second reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Ms. Muns?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
An ordinance amending section 27-102H of the North Little Rock Municipal Code. Second reading.
Suspend the rules, place the ordinance on its third and final reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
09783, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 6947 codified as section 90-67 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code providing for regular trash pickup establishing additional sanitation fee of $1. First reading.
Suspend rules, place on its second.
Second. Motion made and seconded, Ms. Muns?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 6947 codified as section 90-67 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code providing for regular trash pickup establishing additional sanitation fee of $1. Second reading.
Suspend rules, place the ordinance on its third reading.
Second. On the motion to suspend, and then we have amendment after this. On the motion to suspend, Ms. Muns?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
Ms., excuse me, Ms. Muns, if you'll look, there were typos made in where it indicates the table of monthly charges where it says four cans or less. I guess that's our commercial establishment. Number one should read 1370 instead of 1376.
All right, sir.
And number three should read 1820 instead of 1826.
All right.
Move to make amendment.
Second. Moved and seconded that that amendment be made. Any discussion? On the motion to amend, Ms. Muns?
On the amendment, Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes. Move to make amendment. Second. Moved and seconded that that amendment be made. Any discussion? On the motion to amend, Ms. Muns?
On the amendment, Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
Move to adopt as amended. Second. There is a second?
Yes.
I'm going to recognize Alderman Thomas.
One of the things I've mentioned already, and I'm certainly going to vote for it, but I felt like that many times we take advantage of that limbs and the matches and things that we throw out on the street, and the city picks it up. And I know that many people in our city, they don't have that type of trash and things that they throw out. In fact, I even think I can say for sure that we even have people bring this debris from other cities, even Little Rock and all other places, and dump it out, and we pick it up. And so, I was hoping someday we could take a look at that and see if we couldn't charge for that dumping fee. I have a truck loaded right now of trash that I'll pay $75 to $80 to dump it out at Brush Island. But most of that stuff could have been put out, and the city would pick it up, but I just don't think that the old lady that doesn't have that type trash ought to have to pay the same as we do that use that service. And also, I feel like that if we raise this, it'd be good if we could hire some of our temporary people, because tonight at 6 o'clock, I was running late, but I was behind two trash trucks that still picking up garbage out in our area. I asked them if they were temporary. They happened to be permanent, but they said they had a lot of temporary that would like to work. I hope we'll try to hire some of those temporaries that if they've worked two or three years, maybe they can't pass the test that we have, but if they've been doing it for two or three years, I hope we can put them on and use them.
Appreciate your comments, Alderman. We, you know, as we all know, this will make the sanitation department, at least this year, self-sufficient, and we certainly appreciate the hard work they do. This is one of the more challenging times of the year that they have. I know leafs are... leaf pickup is very concentrated now, and we appreciate the job they do. With that, I have a motion to adopt as amended. On the motion, Ms. Muns?
All right, sir. This is a passage call. Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
On your emergency, Gibson.
Question, Mayor, is this effective now or effective January 1?
January 1.
All right, sir. So, there's no emergency clause.
Well, there's an emergency clause on it, though, and Bob, I don't want to get into technicalities. The...
Air, point of order.
Speech of order.
Maybe I was asleep. Did we vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Muns, we did vote on the amendment.
Yes, we certainly did. Yes, sir, we did.
Okay.
I'm just trying to keep things straight, Mary. Alderman, we wouldn't want to put it in the middle of a cycle anyway, but go from January 1. Legally, we may order to put January 1 on there.
I think maybe we would amend all the amendments, but include that it shall be a full force effect on January 1, and I believe that would be in section 4.
Did we just vote? We need... We just voted on this?
We just voted.
We hadn't voted on the emergency clause, so I'm amending the emergency clause.
Okay. So, we have not voted on the emergency clause?
No, sir.
Okay. So, you want to amend the emergency clause to indicate that it's effective on January 1? Ms. City Attorney, is that...
It looks fine. I'll be right back.
Okay. Have you got that amendment, Ms. Muns?
Yes, sir. It comes at the end of section 4. Is that right, Alderman?
Comes as part of section 4.
All right, sir.
It says, "Said in airport emergencies hereby declared," it just say that it'll be effective on January 1. The City Attorney, I'm sure, can get that language.
Point of order.
If we already voted to approve the legislation, would we not need to expunge that vote before we can amend the body of the legislation, which includes the emergency clause? Since this is a rating case, I'd rather be... I'd rather be safe than sorry, since...
Since this is not truly an emergency clause, in the sense that we...
We're going to make it a non-emergency clause.
All right. Then Alderman Carter moves to expunge the vote by which this legislation was adopted. Moved and seconded on the motion to expunge, Ms. Muns?
Okay. To expunge the vote. Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Excuse me. Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Bestow.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
Move to adopt as amended.
There a second?
Second.
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ms. Muns?
To adopt as amended. Gibson.
Yes.
McGlocklin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carter.